Custodian, IT. Well, this is the one I was worried about, that like, there might be two different understandings.
Not even a wink or.
Yeah, well, we should have a discussion to clear that up.
Hey, Bern, can you hear me now? Excellent, cool, great. I was talking to you and you couldn't hear me, so this is going well. All right, the mic is live.
I might not have been listening, Teddy.
I wasn't either.
Manager McKenzie?
Yes, sir.
Can I have a little personal word with you somehow?
Not right now.
The meeting's not started yet.
It's live.
Okay, can I, if I send you an email, is that just to you? Does that show up everywhere?
All right.
I, you guys are cutting out again, I can't hear you.
I said, feel free to call me tomorrow.
Oh, it's something for tonight. I was just trying to save some embarrassment.
All right, so it is seven o'clock PM, and I'll call the meeting of the Berry City Council order this Tuesday, April 26th at 7:00 PM. Council present tonight include Council Dearing, Council Putin, Council Wazza, Council Stockwell, and Council Lozon, welcome. Staff present tonight, we have Manager McKenzie, President Dawes, Chief Vale, Director Shetney, Director Bergeron, and Director Monahan, as well as Chief Brent, so I got my names straight. Oh, and we have someone.
Deputy Chief Joe Alsworth and Buildings and Community Services Recreation Stephanie.
All right, great crew tonight, welcome. So tonight's agenda is available online in the back of the room if you want a copy. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded, and is subject to remotes of the meeting law and the council's rules of procedures, which are available online. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to guests and members of the public joining us tonight. And to those joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties, and raise your hand or signal if you would like to be recognized. The city offers online access as a convenience, and will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. It's my job to run an orderly meeting, and I'll call on speakers in order, allowing those who haven't spoken yet to speak first, and limiting time if necessary, so we can get through this business. If you have any questions about process or procedure, don't hesitate to ask, and we'll get that sorted. So that takes us to item number two, adjustments to the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agendas? Starting with Manager McKenzie. Nothing from the manager, any changes or modifications from council? Hearing and seeing none, I would just like to note under executive session, we have litigation, council did receive a privilege and confidential email, and, and I don't, Manager McKenzie, as I understand it, isn't looking for any action on that matter, but if there are any questions on that matter, we can enter executive session. So that's something we can take up under item 12, on an as needed basis.
Yes, yes, thank you to the adjustments. Number eight, I, eight, A, I, Brian Perkins has removed his name from the application for appointment this, late this evening, and I'm here to just report that, thank you.
All right, we will take that off the agenda. Thank you for letting us know. And as I understand it, you were going to represent him at the meeting tonight, so you can speak on his behalf. And you're muted. Yes, okay, we got, all right. So that takes us to Visitors and Communication for any item that's not on the agenda, member of the public can speak to. Is there any item not on the agenda that a member of the public would like to speak to today?
I just want to let people know that I dropped off line and tick awareness, safety and precaution booklets at City Hall and at the resource today, so when people go to pick up their greenup day bags, they can have that information and stay safe. And if anyone, if they run out, just let me know, and I have more. Thank you.
Thank you, very good reminder. I suspect we're gonna have a lot of people out and about outside in the coming weeks, so always a good reminder to check for texts. Are there any other items or matters for visitors in communication that someone would like to speak to?
Welcome. I had a rep from the studio, your audio is perfect. Hi, my name's Tony Campos. I'm here representing the Berry Rotary Club tonight. We have been doing some fundraising, and we want to present the Berry City Recreation Department with a check for $500. This is for their summer camp scholarship fund. So we're very proud to be giving this to the Berry City. We also have some others that we're donating. This year, we're donating up to $12,000 to this community in Berry Town. So we're very, very proud of the work of all the rotarians and volunteers. And also, my last announcement is, we are going to be doing the Rotary Breakfast on the Aldridge lawn, the last weekend of July. So, please come, enjoy, you guys are doing great work, and I'm gonna give this to you, Carol. Now I'll go back and monitor you.
Thank you so much.
Just as a follow-up to Tony's comments, and the donations that the Rotary Club is making, I actually received a check yesterday. The club made a donation towards the, another bench in Matheson Playground, so, so that's, that's also.
Oh, yeah, one other announcement. In 2024, this club is going to be turning 100 years old. And we were the first club, right after the Supreme Court ruled that Rotary Club could allow women to serve in the club, the Berry Rotary Club was the first club in the nation to employ a woman. So, again, kudos to this club.
Thanks, Tony.
The panting really added this.
Are there any other items for visitors in communication? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to our consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of the minutes of regular city council meeting, 12th of April, the city warrants from the week, Wednesday, April 27th, 2022. Clerk's office licenses and permits, are there any licensure or permits?
I do have one. The Berry Alps Club has submitted their application for their annual entertainment license. It has the appropriate approvals. They typically do their entertainment license at the end of the calendar year, but they haven't been open for large events because of COVID for the last couple of years. So this is a good sign that things are getting back to normal. So that's included on the consent agenda.
So that's item 4C, and then we have under 4D approval, the coin drop request, including final coin drop request, including Berry Sports Hockey. There's an authorizing the manager to execute the police department at this federal fiscal year 2021, violence against women, stop services, training officers, prosecutors grant agreement for state fiscal year 22. And the motion that looks for there is to authorize the manager, it's a $32,000 grant, a $10,000 match. And then I'd math an authorization to apply 2022, improving criminal justice response, circle grant, that's with no local cost or match, and no ongoing expenses, so authorize the city Berry to continue to be a collaborative partner with Circle and the State's Attorney's Office to apply to this renewal of this grant. Is there a motion to approve the consent? We have a motion by Council Dearing, seconded by Council Stockwell. Are there any, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye. I was opposed, no, the ayes have it, and I was. And motion carries. So that takes us to the Clerk Trezor's report.
Just a couple things. One, the fourth quarter property taxes are coming due on May 16th, because the 15th falls on a Sunday. So we're just a few weeks away. This is the time when I start reminding people. So, and this is the last payment on the current tax bill, and the new tax bills will come out in the summer, and we'll start the cycle all over again. So please pay by May 16th. The other thing is, I continue to hopefully successfully work with House Government Operations to push the H444 through, which is the bill that includes the 11 charter changes approved by the voters over last year and this year. And we will continue to keep trying to get that taken care of before the end of the session.
Are there any questions for Clerk Trezor Dawes?
So can the charter changes, can they hold back the flag one and let the others go through?
I, I don't know what happens if, if something doesn't get moved forward, whether it's all moved or piecemeal. I have posed that question to, there's a staff person at the Secretary of State's office, who is the legal counsel who sort of shepherds the process from the towns to the legislature. I posed a question to her, she's doing some research for us, and I hope to hear back in the next day or two.
Following up on that question, interesting to know, under these circumstances, under the circumstances of the charter change H444, being in Limbo, what is the pulse of the council at this late date? Usually hanging in the balance here is the revenue source for capital improvements. In my, in my opinion, this manager would be devastated if that is not, if that charter change is not approved. And I guess I was looking for an informal assessment of the council. Would it be acceptable if legislature and powers that be made a proposal to approve everything but the flag, or is it all or none as far as the council?
I would just say, I think that would be a separate item for the agenda. Okay. And the council has adopted a resolution.
You took a pledge to never mention the F-word again.
So let's take that, any other questions for the Clerk Trezor?
No, all right, then, thank you for your answers.
So that takes us to the Liquor Control Board. We have a couple, a couple items on the agenda, Clerk Dawes.
Yeah, I included in your packet the, the two licenses that are yet to be approved. And they, they hadn't been received, or one of them hadn't been received as of the last time we met, two weeks ago. But they are now both in front of you, that's Delicate Decadence and Gusto's. I included the cover, traditional cover memo. I also included a couple memos from Chief Vale with regards to Gusto's. As part of our approval process, the, the police department and the fire department do inspections and do background checks. And there were, this is, the background check is a, is a new process with Chief Vale. And in the process of doing some research on Gusto's, there were some incidents that, that he had a few questions about. We had a meeting with, with the owners of Gusto's to talk about what procedures they have put in place or are putting in place to, to assure that their patrons are safe, that the community is safe, that everybody's having a great time when they're there. And Chief Vale followed up with another memo, offering his, his approval with contingent upon the, the various agreements that, that he laid out in his memo. And so we bring those two to you for the, for approval.
I would move approval, I would like the memorandum from the chief, I'm gonna move approval with the conditions that is recommended by the chief, and I would like the chief's memorandum communicated to the department.
Sent it in with.
Make sure it's attached, so that they have it, please.
We have a motion for Council Lozon, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Council Wazza, any further discussion on this, on these licenses? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no.
Couple other things. One, the last time we met, two weeks ago, I asked you to approve a whole slew of applications contingent upon them getting the various department approvals, mostly fire department inspection approvals. They have all received successful fire inspections at this stage of the game, and so everything will be going through in a timely manner. So we're pleased about that. Then, then I do have a, on application, we have this, this thing we call the Alcohol Day Use Permit at Rotary Park. It's an acknowledgement and an agreement that was developed probably 15 years ago for allowing alcohol consumption at Rotary Park under the picnic shelters, under the certain terms and conditions of the agreement. We have received a request from the Rotary Club. They're holding a district governor changeover event there on June 19th, and they have submitted this for city approval. So I ask that the council approve it.
Yeah, so you're looking for a permit, is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Council Stockwell, seconded by Council Lozon, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. Takes us, that's all for the Liquor Control Board. That takes us to the City Managers' Report, item number seven, Manager McKenzie.
I have, unfortunately, I have one addition to make. My work spirits came true today. We had the bid opening on a main street pump station project. Bits came in $700,000 over the estimate, the bid was about, ground number's about 1.4 million, ground number's estimate was about $700,000. I'm not willing to concede that the project is dead yet. I think it's got a pulse. What we need, what we do with this time, this is the first time this has happened, quite frankly. I'm not surprised that this big environment, in the first place, there's only one bidder, which is, I think is a reflection construction market. Secondly, based on some very preliminary discussions that contractor misunderstood some of what was required, he bid. His approach to the work, he, he bid it in a way that has unnecessary work. So where we will, we are, we're headed with the engineer and contractors, the value engineer, the plants, inspectors, see where we can find cost savings. I'm not terribly optimistic we can make up it's actually less than, it's around a $500,000 gap, but we'll also see if we can find additional funding. So stay tuned, we'll, we'll report back as soon as we have an action plan. Which is, which is our objective, support this project completed, but the council offices soon. That's the only change I have.
Any other questions? Any other questions about items in the report?
What kind of additional funding sources do you think might be available to help cover those costs?
There may be some from the state, what's called a clean water revolving home fund, in terms of a forgiveness on so, I don't have anything definite, just there are contractors, contractor and engineer are working to value into the project, we'll try to look at.
Thank you.
A question I had is, was whether there's been any progress on the ARPA
No, I have two, just over the top.
The CIP's out.
The CIP's out, but the volunteer committee solicitations are out, but I think I'm opposed to getting that organized. When this, the, the estimate, the bid estimate, when did you that was announced, it was the consultant February 14th, February. That was updated, yes. That was updated from progress. And I was talking with Dionne, and she said the bidding, bidding environment has just been mixed. They've had another one that was over by substantial amount, another one that came right on, and another one that was a little bit under, so it's just total. And is there a list of projects that are going to be bid in the next, you know, eight to 12 months that I could get my hands on? It's not as tight as I would like to see it right now, but Council Bloom was asked for that too.
Yeah, because you can see what we've got in the pipeline, because unfortunately, I suspect this is just a preview of what's to come. Thank you.
Great, any other, any other questions for City Manager McKenzie? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to our first item, a new business and appointment to the homelessness task force we have with us tonight. Dr. Stephen Finner, Dr. Finner, I see you're online. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions I can answer, or any information the council would like?
Yeah, if you could just start by talking a little bit about your interest in the committee, and and perhaps anything you'd like to share about your background and what you hope to accomplish.
Well, my concern and commitment to dealing with the homeless stems from my religious faith, and for 40 years, I've been involved in one way or another with faith-based organizations where I lived, dealing with the homeless in New York City. It was a program fed homeless women, and we were able to buy and rehab an old hotel and create studio apartments for these women whose ages ranged into the late 80s. In Washington, it was an organization that fed over 300 people twice a day, 365 days a year, expanding and provided medical services and then other social services. When I lived in Hembary from 2004 to 2018, on the home on Warren Street, so Good Samaritan Haven was just down the block, so I was doing volunteer work there. And when I returned after recovering from illness to, to Barry last October, I learned of the existence of a homelessness task force and spoke with chairperson, went to one meeting, and then contacted you, seeking if there is a possibility of an appointment, and I do appreciate Counselor Waziak resigning from the task force and creating a vacancy.
Well, thank you for that great introduction. Members of council, are there any questions for Dr. Finner?
I would move approval.
We have a motion from Council Lozon.
And welcome home, Steve.
Seconded by Council Stockwell. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion carries, or you're appointed. Welcome, welcome on board, and look forward to the great work that you're gonna do on the homelessness task force, Dr. Finner.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and you don't have to say the whole night, if you have other items of business you need to get to. That takes us to item 9B, the Lucas J. Herring Greenup Day, and I, I think the namesake for this, this day is in the room tonight. Welcome, welcome, former mayor Harry. I just wanted to say first, this is an informational item, just to share a little bit of information about the event, but also to give you an opportunity to talk about some of your activities, working with the state, state organization. And I hear you might have a challenge for council tonight, so, but I'll, I'll just give an overview of the details and logistics, and then hand it over to you. So as the community mayor may not know, but Lucas, we've named the Greenup Day, 2022, the Lucas J. Herring Greenup Day, it's gonna be on Saturday, May 7th. And we invite you to join your neighbors and celebrate the beauty of Vermont, help make Berry City community, community a greener, cleaner place to live. We have on May 7th, student volunteers that will be distributing bags in the parking lot behind City Hall from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and green up bags will be available in advance for pickup, April, since April 15th through May 6th at the Berry City Cook's Office. Thank you very much. As well as Friday, Monday through Friday, and at Resource Berry, Monday through Saturday. So there are a couple different options. And filled bags, once you fill them up, can be dropped off on May 7th and 8th in the Greenup Day Dumpster located in the Merchants Road Parking Lot behind City Hall. So big thanks to Public Works Director Aaron and McKenzie for helping me make that happen. And we've got a great, one great safety tip from Bern Rose about tips, but we also recommend just wearing gloves, garden, garden gloves can create tight bags when they're full, to keep litter from spilling out, and, and wash your hands afterward. And, and as I understand it, if you see any needles while you're out and about, or any other shards. while you're out and about, or any other sharps that you just don't want to handle, you can call the dispatch, and the police department can follow up. Make sure they're safely disposed of, and last, a huge thanks to Gwen Fredrickson at Spalding High School for organizing the event with student volunteers, and so, just, I know it's going to be a great day, and we really appreciate all the work they put into it. And so, man, I will keep wanting to say, Mayor Harry, I guess I can still call you Mayor.
Well, as we all know, those titles, they stay with us forever, right, so, thank you for the introduction, and Counselor Wazak, I'm going to ask for you, if you could make me a presenter too. I, I know we've kind of asked for that in the past too. But, so while that's being done, I, I do have to read the safety first, as you noted, Bernadette noted at the beginning of the meeting about ticks. It is that time of year where ticks are more prevalent, so just make sure that you are, you know, wearing those socks that are higher, if you're wearing shorts, or just making sure that you have boots on or pants to make sure that you have less likeliness of contacting those ticks. Make sure you have the right tools too, so I use, it's going to fuzz in and out, but I use tongs, right, from a grill. But a lot of people, you can actually buy little pickers, they're trash pickers, and it does help with the bending down, so a lot of people, you know, they, they have stress on their back from constantly reaching down and picking up. But if you do it correctly, it can actually be a good exercise and activity, so you can get out, you can enjoy the fresh air. It was something that, you know, I did quite a bit over the past couple of years, and Mayor, you alluded to that challenge. I had challenged the council in previous years to collect up to fifty-one bags in order to have the fifty-first anniversary of Greenup Day recognized, and this year is the fifty-second anniversary, so I would again challenge council to try as a group to, to collect those fifty-two bags by Greenup Day. And really, it's about eleven days away, if you really do the math on it, I think that you'd be able to go out and be able to collect those bags. I will say that I did survey the area, it is better looking than it has been in the past, but still, there are pockets that everyone will be able to find when they go out there. I, I started doing a little bit of the, the green up myself, I had a good I guess, opportunity to run into the Norwich cadets over here in Northfield, they were cleaning the common on the day that I decided to go out and clean up a little bit on, on Main Street here. And, you know, even the younger generation, the scouts are getting into it, they're planning their days for when they're going to go out. And, and just to reiterate, I, I noticed the weather outside too, it's a little rainy out right now, so if those of you don't want to be out there and say it rains on May seventh, just call it Greenup Week, or Greenup Year, Greenup All The Time. You can get out at any time really, to, to make sure that that cleaning has happened. So I'm going to see here if Counselor Wazak was able to give me permission, which he was, so thank you, sir. So what I'm going to do is, I'm showing my screen, because in the news, you're going to find different areas where there are different events that are going on, I would play this video from Hartford. They launched their green up, just making sure you can see my screen, everyone, thumbs up? Yep, okay, good, so the volume doesn't always come through when you play a video, but if you just see their screen up in Hartford, you're going to see this video and the efforts that they have already done. And I, I just point that out, because Greenup Day is not even here yet, and I'm talking about over in Northfield, and I'm talking in Hartford, and the things that people are already doing to do that outreach to make sure that the, the greening up is happening, and really, it, it's something that has been a tradition, so again, fifty-second anniversary, if we can get fifty-two bags from council, I would actually like this council to try to reach out to other councils in the area, or, or select boards and challenge them to do the same. Just driving from, call it Berry to Montpelier over to Northfield, there are huge pockets in Berlin across from where Price Chopper is, you'll see the trash there. When you get to the intersection to turn onto Route twelve, right there in Montpelier, you will see the trash there. And again, when you get to that town line between Berlin and, and Northfield, you're going to see the trash on the side of the road, so these are all areas that people can get out, different municipalities, to make sure that they can do the work that is needed. So it is, the day is May seventh, again, I'm going to say Greenup Year, Greenup Week. There is another spot in here for green up gear, you'll see I'm wearing my, my green up shirt right now, I'm always a walking advertisement where I can be. And then over here, it says, is there an app for that, and there is. So if you, you do click on that section, it's going to give you a little bit more information than just the app, but it's going to talk to you about your town details, so the mayor had mentioned Gwen Fredrickson, she is the town coordinator for the city of Berry, so you can reach out to her, her information is there. The other information for anybody else from any other town would be listed there. There is a mentor program, so when we're talking about getting youth involved, there's a way to contact them to make sure that we have a good, solid way to contact our, our younger generation. An app, so I'm just going to switch over to another screen here really quick. This right here is the Apple version, so you'll see screenshots here of, of what the app looks like, but basically, you can just log in, create an account. Once you have that account, you can send messages, find a team, or start your own team. You'll see a number of teams when you use the app in Berry City. One, I would give kudos to the Berry Rotary First, I, I know that Tony was just in there, they've done a lot throughout the years to help clean up in the downtown area specifically. And then you're going to see ones like Lions, and the Lions have already put a couple of pins out there, they've cleaned the area on Maple Avenue, heading up from Main Street all the way up to, to Hope Cemetery. Another group that you'll see out there is the River Access Group, of course, you know, we had from the community visit, the, the River Access committee that was set up, so they've already got a team that's established there, and they'll also be doing another cleanup effort later in this year. So just noting that you can go in, you can actually make some roadside notes, there's a color coding to all of the pins that end up going down. And it will note what has been picked up, what has not been picked up, you can do it that way, or you can actually do it the old-fashioned way to report your work, I believe it was noted by Gwen that there is a paper sign-up sheet in City Hall along with the bags there. So, you know, pick up your bags, pick them up in City Hall, or pick them up in the other designated locations. And I believe with a drop-off spot, they're going to still have additional bags on the day of Greenup Day, if you have not picked them up before then. So I don't want to take up too much of your time, I know how often council can go long, so just wanted to give those notes, I did want to give shout-outs to those that have already been out and, and doing the work that's needed. And you did mention needles, it's been a long time since I've actually seen needles out there, but if you do see them, and you do feel comfortable enough to pick them up, what they often say is a coffee can will work, they, even if you have the, the hard plastic ones, it doesn't have to be the, the metal kind. But that way there, the needles don't stick through, and that, that's really the main thing. With a bag like this and somebody picking it up, a needle might be able to go through that, but if you put it within that can, that eventually goes within to another disposal type container, then that's the way to take care of it. So, if anybody has any questions for me for green up or other items, please let me know.
Are there any questions, Lucas?
When you get done with Greenup Day, you grill with those tongs?
So honestly, this is my new set of tongs, you can't really see it on, there we go, this is thicker here. The ones I did have, it was flimsy on the middle, and when I actually do the green up, you would note along Main Street especially, there, there's the the drains, you know, all of the, the different areas where you have what could be buildup of dirt and debris. So I, I usually use the tongs to jam down through to make sure that, as I'm going by, I'm also cleaning those out too, to make sure that the water's not puddling in the road, it has a, a safe place to go, so if I don't see something that I can do that with, that's when I go to see, click fix, and I send it off to Bill, and he can take.
I would just like to note, the former mayor did not answer the question.
If that was the question, no, I do not grill with these.
I heard two challenges for us, Lucas, one is Bill, this council collectively pick up fifty-two bags, it's about seven, seven and a half bags, a counselor. And the second challenge is, would we challenge another municipality, another governing body to, to do the same? And, and I know I'm game to do my, my seven and a half or eight bags or more, and it's, and it's not too difficult to do, and a great way to show pride of place in our community, so moves.
That's collectively, we all have to make a commitment by taking a vote.
We have a motion. Seconded by Councilor Jerry.
I'll leave it to the mayor to identify the victim, select order, council.
I, I, let's do, let's do Berry Town. All right, a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
And we bring those, Mr. Herron, we bring those to your house, correct?
No, the bags that are collected, I believe Bill would allow the staff to pick up along Main Street, and if you want, there will be a drop-off bin behind City Hall, if you do pick it up on, on Greenup Day.
I remember being able to call you last year, telling you to pick them up.
That was last year, this year, I think that would be for the current mayor, if he so likes.
That's too late, the, the motion's passed, that's all right. But, well, thank you so much for that update, and also, just a reminder, this is for roadside waste, it's not for household waste. And there will be separate events for bulky waste and for tires
Late summer.
That are roadside, not for disposable, well, roadside and just roadside tires.
No, it's there, they're
Okay.
I mean, the idea is to get them off people's lapel.
Okay, so, but those are later in the summer.
And we are now, starting this coming weekend, on the yard debris.
Actually, it's started today.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to say.
And the schedule is posted on the city website.
On the website, and it goes through check the skipper, I don't want, I don't want to put out it's Tuesdays, Tuesdays. Blue is Tuesdays, Wednesday is the Saturdays, not the weekends.
That's for yard debris.
Yes, yes, just yard.
All right, well, that takes us to nine, seat consideration of the Berry Opera House City exterior conceptual lighting proposal with an introduction by Dan Casey, as I understand it, this item's a request to just to pursue the permitting.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, I'll give you a couple of the back, but we staff and facility staff and the Opera House have been meeting a couple times over the last few months to support through some coordination and so on, and one of the items that the Opera House has indeed want to pursue is exterior. And we, we, they mutually arrived at the same point that it would make sense to come in and ask for, I guess I would say, informal consent of the landlord, which is the city, for the tenant to make modifications to the city structure. If for some reason, the city council wasn't comfortable with that, there's no sense in wanting the whole formal permitting process, only to be denied at the end, if you will. So that's, that's the basis for this request.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, thanks for having us, I'm just going to pass these around as we talk. Photos of historic buildings that have employed LED lighting, so Dan Casey, I think I know just about everybody here, Michael, we haven't met, good to meet you. I'm joined today by board members Bob Puff and Dave Sagnetti, and Ron is from, Ron's from Vincent Lighting. Ron Kries from Vincent Lighting, who's worked with us pretty extensively over, should I sit here? Does it make any difference?
The only, the only positive thing is that people can hear you better, I don't know if people can hear online.
I know, my voice is usually
I just don't know about people.
So Ron Kries from Vincent Lighting, he's worked with us really extensively over the last couple of years. As a consultant and contractor, we replaced, as part of all the work we did upstairs, we replaced our entire rigging system and did some structural work, Ron's been a, a, a big player in, in, in that whole piece. So I think Steve, Steve's intro was, was pretty much what, what I wanted to say. I think you all received a packet, the, the lower the board packet, that kind of talked about what we were looking at doing. So, with this capital campaign that we've pretty much finished, we've done most of the major work that we, we thought needed to be accomplished, and that included replacing the rigging system, repainting the whole place, replacing orchestra level seating, and doing major, major electrical work. But one of the, one of the projects that we've talked about for years that we haven't tackled yet is lighting that, that we've brought up time and time again, is lighting the exterior of the building, and for us, the purposes of that are multi-fold, first, we want to create awareness that we're here. We can have a sold-out show in the Opera House, and you could drive down Main Street. And we happen to be sitting at one of the busiest intersections of the state, and you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know anything was happening in the building, that was the case two weeks ago. In fact, Dave showed up to do some work after the show, and was sitting across the street, all by himself in his truck. And it was a complete dead zone. So, just to, to carry that point a little bit further. That creation of our presence there, we feel could really help us in terms of attendance at shows, people could see that there was, that there's activity happening in the building, if you get curious themselves about what was, what was happening, and we want to be part of that. Other things, I mean, this is a beautiful building, the Italianate architecture is really quite unique here in, in central Vermont, and some subtle tasteful lighting of some of the architectural features on, on facade, especially the Main Street facade, and somewhere on the, on the Prospect Street facade. Would really, I think, make the, make City Hall and the Opera House kind of a showcase, and during, during the evening. The other thing that we wanted to address was safety, it's, Prospect Street's a really dark street, and we get complaints all the time from people who come to shows and park elsewhere from, other than in the parking lot in the back, some people park across the street over a church street, and particularly seniors who come to shows have told us that they get nervous, especially in the wintertime, coming down Prospect Street, so. The plans that we sent you illustrate that, you know, the, the vast majority of the lighting that we're talking about, would be on a Main Street facade, and then with some sidewalk lighting and some, some minimal facade lighting on Prospect Street as well. So, that's the intent, that's the intent of this. You know, it has a pretty hefty price tag, but we're willing to do the fundraising, there, there needs to be done to, to, to raise that money, we're, we're looking, we're thinking maybe it's a forty-five thousand, fifty thousand dollar project. But we think it's a project worth, worth doing, and again, as Steve said, we're just really looking for conceptual buying tonight from you folks, and hoping that we could move forward with this, with, with city staff and come up with a, with a, with a plan that works for everybody. I can answer any questions, Ron is here as our technical resource, and so if there, if there are any inquiries along those lines, I'm sure he's, he's happy to tackle those.
And could you catch any of these photos that you passed around?
I just, I jumped, you know, we didn't really have, we didn't really have anything, Ron, we gave Ron a photo to work with, and I don't think it was much, we didn't give him much of a starting point with it, so just the same thing before the meeting, I jumped online and looked for historic buildings that had LED lighting. The one photo with the kind of purplish front, that's actually Pittsfield, Massachusetts, and there's a nonprofit down in Pittsfield right now called Berkshire Illuminations, and their intent is to light all the key buildings in Pittsfield with LED lighting. As kind of, to, to serve as like an attraction for the downtown, and to, and to illuminate architecture that they're, that they're proud of in that city, so. I think, you know, as, as we move along, we can, we can give you something a little bit, we can take some city hall pictures and and provide some illustrations of what, what we're, what we're talking about, don't we?
Are questions from the council or the public?
What would the city's responsibility be in the
What would the city's responsibility be in the project?
Uh, essentially, um, coming up with a plan that works, um, you know, we, as with other projects, you know, we really are looking to partner with the city and, uh, and we want to come up with something that's, that works for you guys as well as, uh, as well as us. Um, uh, the nature of the lighting, extent of the lighting, uh, when it's lit, um, where, where the controls are, those kinds of things. Here, ultimately permit, the permit process to.
Essentially just looking for a blessing. Correct, yeah.
Those, those up?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just in the interest of disclosure, uh, Karen is a member of their board of directors. We honestly haven't talked about this, but we don't have. But, uh, obviously, there's no direct financial interest when you're on the board of directors of the Opera House, but I figured out it's actually the opposite. That's okay, we love our Opera House. So this is a historic building, it's stone. How, how do you catch the, the fixtures? And then, you know, how would you address it if you wanted to, you know, twenty-five years from now? I, I think it's a fabulous idea. I love the idea of lighting buildings, when we did the, um, project of People's Health and Wellness Clinic, we actually discovered a spotlight that had been there for years, had been there for decades. And, uh, all we had to do was rewire it and, uh, change the wall. And if, if you drive by that building, you'll see it's well lit in the evening and a lot of people like that. It's obviously not as high tech as this. I think it's a, I, I just think it's a wonderful look, but I do, I do have that question. How do you, if you ever had to unwind it, how do you, how do you unwind attaching something to a historic building?
If I could add to that, will there be a lot of conduit that'll be added to the exterior or will there, the electrical wires go into?
As, as far as attaching, you're, you're right, the, the stone veneer does pose a challenge. What we're discussing is to minimize anchoring in the stone, um, is low profile steel, uh, strut essentially. So we can anchor in very few places, um, primarily up at the upper ledge, um, with a minimal number of anchor points. And then the fixtures attached to that, that strut backbone, if you will. Um, to, to, to be sure, there, there, the installer is going to be challenged in, in drilling the walls and there will be, um, you know, in perpetuity, there will be small diameter or orange probably holes left in the stone from attachment. As for, for conduit, uh, that is another challenge as well to, to minimize penetrations into the building. I presume that the, the, the final electrical plan will have, um, one, two, three, um, penetrations from the interior to the exterior and then the surface mount. Um, it may be conduit, it may be because some of the lighting we're looking at is low wattage and some of it is even low voltage. It might be, um, an exterior grade cable, but it will be surface mounted, uh, not inside. There, there won't be a penetration at every light fixture. Uh, will the, the concept that we're discussing now, uh, a lot of the highlighting will occur, um, up above street level. Uh, there's the beautiful stone cornice, uh, around the top of the building. Uh, the, the idea that we're discussing is mounting, um, LED lighting on top of the ledge that's ten feet below that cornice. Highlighting that architecture up top. Uh, one of the nice things about that is it puts all of the wiring, all the fixtures, all the attachment points out of view. There'd be, you know, from street level, none of that will be, uh, be able to be seen. Some of the fixtures that are down at street level, um, the, there's a lower ledge, about ten feet off the sidewalk. Uh, that's another area where we think you can conceal some of that, that wiring conduit, so it's not seen from the sidewalk. So, so you mentioned, uh, Prospect Street, which I think is a great idea. Will you carry any of that detail or any of those fixtures to the line? You know, it's not the main entrance, actually. Um, it's not partic, particularly well done. Even on show nights when you know there's something going on and you're from here and you know where you're going, it's not a particularly well lit entrance.
So you're talking about the, the, the guy's making.
Yeah, back on it, it, it just doesn't pop.
Yeah.
You know?
Uh, thus far, um, we haven't discussed that side, side.
Maybe we should, maybe we should talk.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, the LED technology is, it's pretty amazing. You know, we've done some things with it and I might suggest, um, when you are mounting, because we've had some challenges with the exterior buildings and putting up signs, we try to anchor at the mortar joints and not go through the actual stone itself. Because the mo, the mortar, if you ever have to replace something or change it, it's, it's fairly easily replicated. True, that's its color.
It, it might be nice, Tom, to, uh, just thinking about your idea, uh, is to carry the lighting that we put to the cornice around the, the backside of the building as well. So then, from a color standpoint or illumination standpoint, it continues. That would, that would be pretty.
That's a good idea. And highlight, you know, the entrance to the building if it's actually where people are going.
Yeah.
I think it's, like to see more. I mean, I think it's, it's an exciting idea, I appreciate, you know, I appreciate the Opera House and I appreciate all of your hard work, especially in the recent restoration efforts. It's, uh, stunning, you did a absolutely incredible job, so thank you so much for that.
It's been a good part, I appreciate it.
So again, without, uh, I just want to make, I, I'd be happy to make that motion, but I want to make it clear in my motion that, uh, this is not, uh, intended in any way to be an influence upon the Design Review Board. They are an independent body and they decide, deciding, uh, you know, independently.
Hooked on, do you have a question?
I, I just was curious, one of the things that, um, from back at my time in the Opera House and, I'm sure even before that, uh, and there's continued to be interest in illuminating the, the stained glass window. And I didn't know whether that was something that was hopefully going to be part of this.
We're still talking about that, we haven't quite gotten there yet. I think, you know, in my, oh, oh, at least seventeen years from me next month, uh, I don't think we've come up with a more challenging project to light in a stained glass window. And the challenge in it is that it's actually bisected by the balcony. So there are two separate areas that have to be lit, the larger, uh, lower one and the smaller, upper one. And you want to get even washing on it. And, uh, because it's, those two areas are so different, that's been challenged. Where the advent of, um, of, uh, better LED lighting is, is making it, is, is making it more possible. And I think, I think we're pretty close to a solution with that as well. Yeah, thanks for working out.
My last question is just what, what permits are going to be required? So it sounds like it's going to go through the doc designer review process for the developer review.
Honestly, we haven't really gotten there yet. I mean, we, we met with Steve, we met with Jeff and, uh, and that was really the starting point of all this. So, uh, we haven't, uh, pursued any of, um, we haven't checked on any other information at this point.
So just, just a question, do we need a motion for any of that?
I think they're, they're looking for a motion, uh, Rick, or Steve and I.
Yeah, I think so. One second.
Yeah. Authorized the Berry Opera House to pursue the permitting process for its lighting improvements proposal. As I understand, Council goes on the subject there, while recognizing that, that any permitting process is, you know, the process and that there's been, there's been work there.
And we still haven't seen a final. I, I like it so far, not really don't.
So if that's a motion from Council, those on, we have the second from Council Stockwell, is there any further discussion on this?
Well, you can, you can, you can make, go ahead and finish the motion. I just, I'm not, I wasn't anticipating that the project would have to be, come back to the council for any further approval. That the basic responsibility and, uh, approval authority the council had was for the tenant to make improvements to the building. Once that's done, the project is handed off to our normal permit process. They made it with the blessing of the council, I guess you can, uh, make enhancements like you're describing now. You wouldn't need to come back to the council, but I guess, I only raised that question, so if there's a different expectation on the part of the council, we, we know.
Council goes on, is your motion contingent upon sale?
A fun, you know, I, I kind of would, only because I, I am a little sensitive to, to where things go. We haven't seen a final plan. We, we've seen a great start and I don't want to in any way discourage you, but, you know, I haven't seen a final plan. I did have questions about some of the angry points and, uh, yeah, this is, you know, we all know this is a pretty, pretty special place. So, uh, you know, again, I'm, I, I'm encouraged by what I've seen so far, but, you know, I just wouldn't consider a final plan. Would that be okay with you gentlemen? Just.
Sure. Uh, so the processes are permitting through the design review.
Well, I think that's.
All right, with me, I'll, I'll help you go down that path.
But if I'm, if I'm here and Council goes on, you're interested in seeing just the final lockup of the building?
Exactly.
To acknowledge, uh, to, to support, uh, the rest of the project.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I would because they're worth you, but, you know, like even when I brought up, you know, the main entrance, there were a couple of questions there. And then, you know, the big question mark is, uh, you know, the angry points and how we accomplish that. I mean, literally as Mr. Pope certainly know, even epoxy is stone and it doesn't damage the stone. So there's a lot of way, a lot of ways to fix, certainly the, you know, the cornice where you were mentioning that. Uh, you know, there's certainly ways to fix lights with that without early molds. And I'm, I'm just interested in seeing that final plan so that, you know, we can have that conversation, which is, okay, hey, guys, I like what I'm seeing here. And you can look at me and say, and there are very few permanent angry points in stone, because that's what I'm going to be able to say.
I think what, you know, when we discussed the process, uh, earlier with, uh, Bill Hearn and Steve and, and his crew, uh, you know, we just didn't want to get into a weekly discussion with the council where we were on the thing. You know, that his people wanted to be the ones that, that kind of took us through the process and work with us to get the specifics on the movements and this and that. And then we would have a, you know, a cohesive unit to say, this is what we've come up with with the city side.
Yeah. And so, you know, you've heard my concerns and I, I mean, I'm excited about the project. I, I like lighting buildings, uh, I love architecture and I love showing off handsome buildings. And if you, if you're brave enough to just walk with your head up and walk all the way down Main Street and avoid getting hit by our, some of the architecture that we walk by every day and we really don't look at, is absolutely incredible. So, you know, I'm going to be in favor of any, any chance we get to show it off, but again, I'm going to be respectful of the building. That's all.
That's what was said.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I agree with Council about that, I like the project. I like what I'm hearing about the project is that we're not trying to dramatically alter the exterior of the building in any way. We're just trying to draw attention to the critical features that it has. Um, but like I'm, I just want to see a render, that what it's actually going to look like, whatever, you all decide you want to do. When you know what that's going to look like, I just want to see a picture before I say yes.
And, and, and I, and I just want to make sure I understand, Dave, is that you're empowering us to work with Steve and the designer review board and other folks with the City Hall staff, if you will, um, to, to make this, to move the project forward, because we really want to work in partnership with them, realize that getting into the weeds of this stuff is not what you guys are about, it's, it's, but council.
Has it? Let you guys do what you're experts in and then we'll just say yes to the pictures at the end.
So we're gonna extend. So, so I hear is a motion, uh, to conceptually support the project, subject to, uh, council's approval of a final lockup. Um, and to do the coordination, um, to understand what permits might be required, um, and what review processes and standards are going to be needing that. Um, just in acknowledgement that this is such a, a culturally important, um, building, um, and, uh, exercising a certain amount of caution. Council Stockwell?
Just, I love this idea, especially I agree with you, the entrance actually, maybe it's concealer is supposed to go. Council's, well, goes on to point is great and it is a beautiful thing. However, does this mean that they can go through the entire process and get all the permits and come back to council and council say no?
I, I would think the sequencing would be that you would, uh.
Not.
Not do that.
Because that seems like that would be.
I, I, I wouldn't expect that because I, I think.
You could always.
How many years, how many years have you been on the Opera House? I mean, seventeen years, Dan.
Four.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't think anyone respects the Opera House, you know, more than you do. But I guess let me liken this to this, on occasion, um, we will be contacted by, uh, like cable satellite company. And they'll ask and they'll say, your tenant has requested that, that we put this satellite on your building. This is how we're going to do it, this is how we're going to fix it. It's your building, so we need to have you sign off. And we generally do, as long as they respect the building and they're not doing something crazy. So, um, you know, like I said, I, I wouldn't expect that I would say no to a plan. Uh, I wouldn't expect I, I would say no to a worthwhile plan, but I also wouldn't expect you to disrespect the building. And I don't expect that.
No, I think that.
But if you do, we're gonna have to talk about it, that's all.
And it's our hope that, that the city benefits by this as well. It's not just, it's not just us.
We don't, we don't view it as an Opera House project. We're getting, we're supplying the funding and some of the labor, but it's really got to have the city's approval and, and the city engineer has to be on deck. This is what we've all agreed to do, is it's a joint project once we get that far. It's not, you know.
Absolutely.
We're not putting a satellite up there so we have TV with the Opera House.
Right. So, you know, I've expressed my concerns, Mayor, and, and I'd just like to see a final plan, that's all. So that we could say yes to that.
No motion in the second, any further discussion on this? Seems like we're been about twenty, twenty minutes into it. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, guys have it, thank you so much.
Yeah, I, I just pointed out, Dave, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Key personnel from the city side are Jeff, uh, Urdran as facilities director, um, Bill works with him as well on different issues. Once, you know, my suggestion and listen to this conversation is that we work together to develop the plan.
Yep.
And then come back and have a council blessing and then move to the permitting process.
Okay.
Because I, because I don't think, I don't think the current process is going to get concerned with some of the details that the councils are, um, yeah. Say, yes, I'm right, or yes, they will.
There, so, so some of the concerns that Tom brought up are things that happen at development report parents. Those are the kind of questions that I'll be posing to be asked if they're not already asked.
I've. My suggestion is you develop the, develop the, the plan, if you will, yeah. And then come back.
So I, I think what we'll plan to do, Steve, is to be in consultation with you for the, as long as you're here.
Well, I'm flattered, but I don't think it has to be me. I really think it's Jeff or Bill or Janet is a, is a sort of a client.
Good.
No, no, we're, we're going to use you all.
Yeah, good. And it's also safe to, if I may, Mayor, uh, when will you be submitting again? DRV, I mean, there is a lead time and this is Vermont and we do have a short construction season. So in order to make the June meeting, they would have to submit and then thirty days from that date.
So if they want to be on the June meeting, I need a full, complete application to review, I think by the first Friday of May.
Right, so I just want to make, make you aware of that because, you know, you live in Vermont. So I think inherent in my motion, Mr. Mayor, was the authorization for the manager or the chat need assigned on behalf of the council. If the signature is needed on the DRV application and you do want to submit for the June meeting, um, you have the authorization.
Well, this sounds like a reconsideration motion. So, I mean, the motion's been made and adopted, yeah, to the time to, as best. Um, but as I understand it, you're going to coordinate with planning permitting staff.
Yep.
And, uh, and make sure that you have a permanent ready application, um, and, and come to council and maybe those processes can run sequentially or in. Um, and and come to council and maybe those processes can run sequentially or in parallel, but that's up to you.
All right.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. So that takes us to a, an update from Dave Roberts of the Vermont Energy Investment Corporation on zero emissions municipal vehicles. I invited Dave to to speak as a statewide expert in on this topic, um, just in recognition that. Fuel prices are going quite up. We're going to hear about it from Director Monahan that that's our next agenda item. But also that we have a capital equipment plan that's forecast purchases for ten years and there are no electric vehicles, zero emission vehicles. On that plan right now. And, uh, and and I, I just think it'd be, it's a great opportunity to learn from Dave about some of the cost savings. That municipalities could see with zero emission vehicles for participants. So Dave, if you want to introduce yourself, and I know you have a slideshow on the flasher.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hemrick. Can you hear me okay? Can, can you all hear me okay? Okay, good. Um, so I'm Dave Roberts. I work at VEIC. We're a nonprofit based in Winuski. We coordinate the Drive Electric Vermont Program, which is something that I've been working on for about the last ten years. It's a public-private partnership. We're going to get more plug-in electric vehicles in Vermont. And we're doing that work, uh, you know, in partnership with the state of Vermont municipalities, uh, electric utilities, basically. Anyone who's interested is welcome to to join our stakeholder group and, uh, help us consider ways to do this work. Uh, so, uh, some of you may be familiar with VEIC. We also operate the statewide energy efficiency utility efficiency Vermont. Uh, but the electric vehicle work that I'm talking about is is sort of a separate effort that's that's funded through different. Uh, means than efficiency Vermont. So I don't know.
Up your presentation at this point? Would you like your presentation?
Yes, that would be great. Yes. So, uh, as that's coming out, here we go, as that's coming up. I think we can go ahead and skip to slide three.
And just let me know, give a vocal next slide.
Will do. So a few of the, the reasons that, um, we're supporting electric vehicles in Vermont is savings. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but both sort of on the fuel operating costs as well as maintenance. There's, uh, you know, EVs are an important strategy in the Vermont Climate Action Plan that was, uh, adopted in December. Uh, transportation is the single largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the state, so. Electric vehicles can drastically reduce greenhouse gas emissions and other harmful tailpipe emissions. So that's another good reason. Uh, they actually have great performance. So I don't know if. Uh, folks on the council or in the audience have ever had the chance to to drive an EV or get, uh, at least go for a ride in one, but they actually. A lot of fun to drive. They have, they're very zippy. They have good acceleration. Uh, they're quiet. Uh, they do have, uh, provided you can charge at home or where your fleet depot is, in the case of municipal vehicles. Uh, it's very convenient. You don't have to, uh, make a side trip to the gas station in the morning before you get on the road. It's, you know, the vehicle is charged up and ready to go. So next slide. And when I'm talking about electric vehicles or plug-in vehicles, there's two basic types in Vermont. There's the all-electric models that are powered solely by the battery. And these days there are models that actually have over three hundred miles of electric range before you need to plug them in. Uh, so well, well, more than enough for for most, uh, daily needs. Uh, important to keep in mind, though, that you will see significantly less range in winter conditions. So on the coldest days. We typically say you'll see about half of the official range estimate from the automaker in a worst-case scenario. Uh, so the other option then is a plug-in hybrid, which, uh, can travel on the battery, usually twenty to forty miles on the battery. And then you have gasoline as sort of a backup. So if you're doing a lot of longer road trips or charging. Is more uncertain, the plug-in hybrid can be a good fit. And in Vermont, as of January, we've got. About a fifty-fifty split between the all-electric and plug-in hybrid models and, uh, just about six thousand, six hundred. EVs on the road, which is around a little over one percent of the registered vehicles. Uh, if we go to the next slide, we can see some of the models that are currently popular, some of the most registered EVs in the state. Shown here on the left are some of the all-electric options and different ranges, different price points. Sometimes when you see like with the Tesla Model Three here, the range from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and twenty-two miles. That difference is due to different size batteries. So you can pay extra for an extended range battery. That that price that's shown is the base price for the, the standard range option. On the right are some of the plug-in hybrid options and I'd note, uh, the Crosstrek Hybrid. And the Toyota RAV4 Prime are all-wheel drive, which is a popular, um, popular requirement for many Vermonters these days. And next slide. We've got a few of the more recent arrivals and some things that are coming soon shown here. Most of these have all-wheel drive. Either standard or as an optional feature. Wanted to point out the Harley Davidson LiveWire that, uh, some of you may have seen the Vermont Department of Motor Vehicles Enforcement Bureau. Recently outfitted one of those electric motorcycles to be used for law enforcement purposes. And, uh, that was done by Wilkins Harley Davidson, just down the road from the city. Another, uh. Vehicle that's maybe of particular interest for a lot of municipal fleets is the Ford F-150 Lightning and. Some of the other electric pickup truck options that are coming, but the the Lightning actually just started production, official production today. So, uh, the Ford has, I think, two hundred thousand people signed up on their list to to get one of those and they're. Looking forward to ramping up production of that. Uh, hopefully deliveries be starting pretty soon.
I think we have a question on the price of this cover.
No, yeah, it's just a way that's it's the Ford F-150 Lightning is forty.
Forty thousand.
And that's the base price. Yes. So again, you know, that will come with different battery sizes and different trim levels. So you could certainly expect that one could spend more than that, but. For sort of a base model that's, uh, relevant for a lot of fleet applications, Ford is saying that they'll be providing that in that. Forty thousand dollar range, which is pretty competitive with a gasoline-powered, uh, F-150. And if we go to the next slide. Can start talking about how, you know, even though some of those EVs might cost more upfront than comparable gasoline models. When you start factoring in the total cost of ownership, so some of the savings on fuel and maintenance. And on this slide, we've got fuel, fuel costs shown. And, uh, it's sort of an average monthly cost for someone driving a thousand miles a month. And an average gasoline car and an average electric car. So lots of average things here and, you know, the city is moving forward with. Looking at your fleet options, you may want to dig in a little bit further to to understand your, your actual costs. But you can see the electric rates are regulated. So, uh, you know, they do tend to. Go up somewhat with inflation over time, but they're, they're much, uh, more consistent than, uh, gasoline prices, which are quite volatile and. This chart, the data that we have only runs through the end of twenty twenty-one, but we all know that. In the last few months, fuel prices have really skyrocketed. And even though they've come down a bit, they're still quite a bit higher. So just looking at some rough numbers as of, you know, the last week or so. Driving an electric vehicle could provide about a sixty percent cost savings on fuel. And that's just looking at sort of average electric rates, uh, in the state.
Could you say that last statistic one more time, Dave? And the savings are how much?
About sixty percent cost savings on the fuel alone. So, uh, very, very significant. Potential savings there and it's essentially the more driving you're doing, the more potential for savings. Uh, so. You know, if you have fleet vehicles that are high mileage, they can be provided that they have enough range to meet the daily needs. That an EV would have enough range to meet the, the daily travel needs of those vehicles. It could be a great fit because you're gonna save quite a bit of money on fuel. If we go to the next slide. I'm looking at some of the, the additional potential savings. Uh, as I said, you know, more miles is more savings. Electric vehicles, especially the, the all-electric options, uh, you know, fewer moving parts, fewer. Uh, systems to to go wrong. So you won't have to deal with oil changes, spark plugs, all these other things that. Uh, are required in gasoline-powered vehicles. EVs have something called regenerative braking that essentially turns the vehicle motor into a generator. So when you're using the brakes, it's actually not using the mechanical brakes. It's recovering some of that energy and putting it. Back into the battery. So that really, the vehicles do still have mechanical brakes that are used at times. But that really, that regenerative braking really helps reduce the wear and tear on the brakes. And as we start looking at heavier duty vehicles, there aren't many options in that space today, but if we're looking out ten years. Uh, expect to see quite a few more options for, uh, electric trucks. It could be. Street sweepers, other municipal vehicles, um, you know, a lot of benefits there. Uh, diesel trucks today have, uh, emission reduction systems that can be complicated to maintain and electric. Options basically do away with with all of that. Looking at just some experience, New York City has very ambitious, uh, fleet electrification goals and they've. Done some number crunching on their experience to date and they're saying, they're saying about an eighty percent reduction in the maintenance costs with their. Uh, fleet electric vehicles. So again, you know, very significant cost savings, uh, that help offset maybe a little bit higher upfront cost. And the photo here is just, uh, an example of a small electric vehicle. The city of Winuski has been using these vehicles for many years. For sort of, uh, uh, travel around town for zoning inspections and parking enforcement and things of that sort. So next slide. And this is really my, my last slide, uh, so I'm happy to to take questions after this, if folks have them. Uh, but you know, just some thoughts on, uh, opportunities for the city to start thinking about integrating EVs into your planning. Uh, one is if you're doing any sort of construction projects at city buildings or maintenance facilities. You can start thinking about including charging infrastructure and. If not actually installing the charging, you can put in sort of electrical conduit and. Electrical service to make it much easier to install charging in the future, make it so you wouldn't have to go in and dig up. Big parking lots and things like that if you're doing the work in the near future. Uh, we always recommend sort of starting small. So rather than saying you're just going to go in and replace every vehicle next year. You know, start thinking about, well, maybe a pilot program. There's a lot of leasing options. So if you're. Not ready to to sort of take the plunge and own a vehicle, maybe lease one for a couple of years, get some experience with it. Um, you know, learn how it works for you and and what, what, uh. Uh, what the benefits are and and maybe some of the compromises you might have to make. Also recommend discussing with Green Mountain Power, your electric utility. They do have programs to help. Uh, fleets electrify. So I'm sure they'd be very happy to talk with you and I can put you in touch with with those folks if you're interested. Um, and then, you know, if you really want to get into it, uh, there are opportunities to do sort of a, a study of all the vehicles in your fleet. Or certain vehicles in your fleet to see which ones might be the best candidates, uh, for electrification in the near future and what might be. Kind of longer-term options. And I've got some links here on the slides to, uh, an EV fleet, a group that's, that's working nationally to get more EVs into public fleets. As well as, uh, the Vermont Clean Cities Coalition, which is also doing some fleet electrification work with other, uh, Vermont municipalities and businesses. So that's, that's it for my prepared remarks, but I am very happy to take any questions or or hear any thoughts.
Thank you for the introduction, Dave. Councillor Was.
Yes, thank you, Dave. Um, I mean, I actually saw about the electric motorcycle. They had it displayed in the State House. Either last week or the week before, right in the lobby, people must come and check it out. Very cool. Um, you mentioned, you know, we know the problem with electric vehicles is they cost too much upfront. And people get afraid of the price tag, even though there are long-term energy costs. We know all of this. Um, when you said that you could, we could get in touch with Green Mountain Power and they have programs to help municipalities move their fleet. Towards electric. Does that include, um, financial help?
Uh, Green Mountain Power and and other electric utilities in the state do offer financial assistance for, uh, EV purchases, I think, right now. Don't pull me to this. Again, encourage you to to talk with them directly, but I believe it's fifteen hundred dollars right now is what GMP can offer for an all-electric vehicle. Um, you know, there may be other opportunities that GMP could support charging infrastructure, uh, particularly if it's open to city employees or the general public. Um, and those are programs offered as part of their program to meet the state's renewable energy standard. Uh, there's a, what's called tier three of the renewable energy standard that requires utilities to help offset their customers' fossil fuel use. There is a state of Vermont, uh, incentive program for electric vehicles, which currently is only available for sort of consumers, not for municipalities or businesses. Has been some talk of, uh. You know, expanding eligibility and that is a recommendation that was included in the climate action plan. To my knowledge, it has not, uh, it's not included in the draft transportation bill that's currently working its way through the legislature, but. You know, hopefully that, that will happen at, at some point in the next few years and that should also. Uh, help offset some of those initial costs. And then the other thing I would just mention is costs are coming down. Uh, you know, the battery prices. Well, I take that back. Actually, the chip shortage has, has really thrown, uh, a lot of the auto industry. Off and costs have gone up over the last few months, but if you look long-term. Hopefully that chip shortage is is not a long-term issue. And if we're looking at five or ten years for. City fleet purchases, the expectation is that battery prices will be coming down. And, uh, vehicle prices should, should follow that pretty closely.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that that chip shortage is not unique to electric vehicles. That's impacted the entire market.
Councillor Stockwell.
Okay, question for Dawn. So if we're going to consider saving the police fleet and we're replacing it with some electric vehicles over time. Would we save enough in vehicle maintenance costs to make that a wise investment? Is there any way of knowing? Unfortunately, we don't track our vehicle in finance, but they could individually in the department, but we don't track it, the maintenance costs by vehicles. It just goes into one, one line item.
Based, based on one slice, I saw there, right? I think electric vehicles. All the time could make a noticeable improvement in its costs. A positive impact on. But that's, that's contingent, I think, upon when it gets to the point where the heavy vehicles are electrified. That's where our heavy maintenance costs. I mean, if they were. It's not, it's not inconceivable that you have a electric PPW vehicle within a year. Bill is comfortably purchasing another. Particular, snow, our snow sidewalk lot. Uh, which we find to call Kermit now. So if, uh, there's a Kermit two in the future, Bill's looking at the. Actually first.
Councillor.
Yeah. So what's the average price difference between identical vehicles? Um, one that's electric and one that is not.
It, it's hard to pin it down that precisely because, you know, it's all, electric vehicle pricing is generally driven by the batteries, which are the most expensive components. So the more range, the more you're paying. And that's why some of those models have sort of extended range batteries that that cost a little bit more. So there are. You know, the least expensive models that are out there like the Nissan Leaf, which is a four-door hatchback. Uh, that starts around twenty-seven thousand dollars, um, for comparable gasoline-powered vehicle that might be. Uh, you know, twenty thousand dollar range. So you're talking maybe ten thousand dollar differential. As you start working your way up and thinking about some of the pickup truck options, you know, those do cost more. So, um. If you're, if you're able to work with that standard range, F-150, for example, that's forty thousand. Then the price differential might be less than ten thousand dollars, depending on how your trucks are configured. And that's where. You know, doing a little more study or, or, you know, some analysis as part of your capital program. Could help you figure out, you know, can we get by with just that base model or do we need the extended range and and, you know, how's that impact the cost?
Well, based on the slide where was the annual savings, it looked like it was somewhere around twelve hundred annually for gas. That's saving over the energy of.
So for, for the fuel costs, um, it's a little bit, it's been a. So for, for the fuel costs, it's a little bit, it's been a little less than that. But right now prices are so high that it, it's probably, you know, in that, in that range. But long-term, you know, it's hard to say the prices will stay quite as high as they are right now. We saw maybe $2,000 in fuel cost savings over five years for light duty vehicles. So not, you know, trucks, not as efficient.
What's our average time that we keep lease brokers?
Well, we don't lease any.
No, we don't lease them.
It's.
Three to five years.
Three to five years. We buy one every year, we replace the front line cars every year.
Yeah. So the reason why I point that out is because the, the technology is not there yet, in my humble opinion. But, I mean, for the, the cost savings that we're talking about, you still have maintenance costs on electric vehicles. You, you can't tell me that you don't, you, you have to have a, you have to have maintenance costs on them. And, you know, we're talking, you said $10,000 for the cheapest, right? The, the leaf, about $10,000 in difference in price. And we keep our cars about three years. And, and if we're saving on the high end, $2,000, that three years does not make ten. So I mean, we're, it's just, it sounds, it sounds great. You know, we talk about, you know, money saving and, but at the end of the day, until those prices come down, it's really frustrating. When I, when I went to purchase a Jeep, I wanted to get an electric Jeep, right? A beautiful green Jeep with EV on it, but it was $15,000 more. It's just, it was just, I looked at it, there's no way. I mean, and, and unfortunately, we're not there yet. You know, maybe in a couple of years, Elon Musk is going to come out with a better engine. And then it will make it, you know, sense of it. I, I think right now it's a little too early, but thank you.
Dave, did you have any, anything that, okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As one of the staff members of the Energy Committee, this has been near and dear to our hearts for at least six years, right? So we've always talked about just dipping our toe in the water. We don't have to go electrify the entire police fleet. Let's maybe do the meter reader car or, you know, let's start small. A question for Dave is, we had heard, and you know how rumors are, is are there incentives at the dealerships for municipalities to potentially lease or purchase a vehicle to get started towards electrifying, electrifying our fleet?
There, there can be right now with the chip shortage, it's hard to, to find deals, honestly. But in the past, there is a federal tax credit that's available for many EVs. And that tax credit is something that municipalities can't access because you don't have tax liability. But if you go through a leasing company, in many cases, the leasing company can basically claim that credit and pass it through as part of a lease deal. And for all electric vehicles that are eligible for it, that's a $7,500 tax credit. So that can go a long way toward sort of making up that differential, that, that higher upfront cost. But, you know, it's, it's dependent on the leasing company and the, the reference that I provided on one of those final slides there, the Drive EV Fleets. They do have some leasing companies that have worked with municipalities on that issue in the past.
As you find that the longevity of the vehicle is different, like for instance, we're, we're placing our police credit every three years, which, you know, I think some members of the community think is a pretty rapid turnover rate for any vehicle. Do the electric vehicles have a better longevity compared to an internal combustion engine?
I'd say that the jury is out. I mean, the main issue is the batteries. The manufacturers generally offer eight-year, 100,000 mile warranties on the batteries. And at least so far, history suggests that you should expect about a 2% degradation of the battery range annually. So after five years, you'd be talking about 90% of the original range or about 10% of the, the battery range might be lost. This is not set in stone because, you know, most of the, especially the newer, longer range EVs haven't been on the roads long enough to, to really judge for sure how, how well they'll hold up. But, you know, certainly there are EVs on the road, Teslas with 300,000 miles, still running on the original battery. The electric motors require very little maintenance, they're essentially maintenance free. So there are some other maintenance things, certainly, you know, vehicles still need to be inspected. You're still going to have tires to deal with. You still may have mechanical brake issues, but generally speaking, they've been quite reliable. And I mentioned that statistics from New York City, they're seeing an 80% reduction in their maintenance costs so far.
We can wind this down, but Counselor Booton?
Or Counselor Lozon? You know, I for one would be interested in seeing, in seeing a comparison. So for example, I agree with Counselor Booton. I think when you look at emergency service vehicles, they're very unique. And so kind of thinking as we were having this discussion, having a fleet, a fleet of police vehicles, I doubt the range would exceed, you know, 300 miles in a shift. But the problem is our police vehicles don't always know when they're going to be called into service. Sometimes we have emergencies in the city and if one is charging, that could be problematic. But I look at other vehicles that are not mission critical. I look at, for example, you know, some of the permitting and building inspection vehicles, even some of the vehicles at public safety building for the building inspectors. And so what I'd like to see going forward, I'd just like to see a comparison. So if we're, if we're going to replace a vehicle that is not an emergency service vehicle, I'd just like to see a sheet if they're, if they're going with the, you know, with all Vermont or fusion fleet model. I'd just like to see a cost comparison and say, well, counsel, this is what it would cost to purchase, to purchase this electric vehicle. Because I'm reminded of an earlier council, council meeting when I wasn't serving. And I, I think it was Counselor Mori at the time who said, Mr. Lozon, you have private charging stations. And he wanted to know how cost effective they were. And it was a little exasperating. Finally, I looked at it and I said, you know, sometimes doing the right thing isn't the most cost effective thing. So it's, it's more about setting an example. So I, I'd just be interested going forward and being able to make an informed decision about moving some of our fleet to electric. And I'd be interested in seeing that comparison. Oh, thank you for that. And thank you.
Counselor, dear.
Dave, you said at the end of your presentation that there were some compromises that would need to be made for this to happen. Can you talk to some of those compromises that we'd have to make?
Well, I guess it's potential compromises and it's really, you know, the use case. So Counselor Lozon just maybe flagged one. If police vehicles need to be on call 24/7 and it takes, depending on the charging equipment in the vehicle, but say, you know, four or five hours for a charge overnight typically. You know, is there a backup plan or do you stagger charging to make sure there's always vehicles that are, are ready to go? If you've got to a point somewhere many years down the road where all of your vehicles are electric, there may be issues with electric service availability at some of your facilities that require thinking about where charging is happening. Maybe need to make some upgrades to electric infrastructure in partnership with GMP. And, you know, generally speaking, the driving experience of EVs is, is not a compromise, it's an improvement. But it, there may be some training required for staff to get familiar with it, the vehicles, especially if they're being used for law enforcement purposes or, or public safety. You know, there may be additional training required for staff to, to be up to speed on it, know how the vehicles will perform sort of in, in those situations. So, you know, those are some of the things that come to mind, certainly as I mentioned, if, if you really, the city is really interested in, in digging into this, doing a full sort of fleet evaluation can be helpful and talking with the fleet managers and the departments to understand what their issues are and, and where, you know, there may be other compromises that are coming to my mind right now.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I like, I agree with what Counselor Lozon said, and sometimes it does cost a little bit more to do the right thing. It's about setting an example. We know the state has moved buses and other state vehicles, like what Janet said about, you know, dipping our toe in. Let's get one or two of these things online. Let's get some of these operational questions down. And I swear I won't stay on this box for long. But I also agree with Counselor Booton's point about that these things are much more expensive than they should be. And I, it's because we have a, in the United States Congress, we have a senator from West Virginia who's old and from coal state that is in charge of the energy policy of the United States. If we were spending half as much money towards electrifying our fleets across the country as we are towards fossil fuels, the council wouldn't have to be sitting here nickel and diming one or two vehicles and a couple of charging stations. We could actually make transformation change, but we need federal leadership to make that happen. And that's the end of my synopsis for tonight.
Well, Dave, thank you so much for giving us an overview about kind of what's happening in the marketplace and what other people are seeing. It would be interesting to see some case studies as Vermont municipalities test the waters and try out an inspection vehicle and, and see, run those numbers and see what, what might be possible. I think we're going to, I think we're going to move on. It's okay.
No, just wanted to say that the school board did do EVs for the buses. Worked out pretty good.
So thank you so much, Dave.
All right. My pleasure. Nice to see you all.
We get a financial report. How are you? Thanks for coming.
So in the packet, I have given my update for Q3. So this was information pulled out of March 30th, which was 75% complete of the fiscal year. General fund revenues are running ahead of budget at 80%. And the general fund expenditures are running slightly below that baseline at 73. They laid out for you some, before I get to that point, I wanted to say that the ambulance revenue is always a topic that we, we touch on every time I'm in front of you guys. We are running at 86% right now through March, which is 388,000. And if that stays on trend, we're projected at 517,000 at the end of the year and our budget was 450,000. Looks to be headed in the right direction on that. And the other one I wanted to point out was the BOR and some leases had a strong year. While I haven't done the final reconciliation with our rec director yet, it sits at 109% of the budget, a little over 109, actually, at 136,000. So it was a strong year for that. And then I did on the expenditure side, I laid out some examples of why we would be running ahead of the budget of the 75% in the certain departments. Not really going to go through all of those, but if you had any specific questions on the revenue or expenditures, we have to answer those now through the general fund.
So counsel, if there's any questions online.
I have just one quick question with regards to ambulance. Dawn, does that include the, the extra sort of replacement money that we got from the state?
No, it does not. That is separate. That revenue you would find under federal or state aid. And in the packet also, I did the vehicle fuel, heating fuel for all the different facilities and salt budget status. And when I ran the numbers for the salt, we were at 70%. And there was one load that hadn't been delivered at that time, which an estimate I was given was $2,400. So we'll be well under that budget unless mother nature decides else.
And the fuel, how much do you think we're going to be over on the fuel?
Well, right now we're at 85% of our budget, so.
Well, it's also, which fuels are we talking about? You're talking, I mean, the fossil fuels that we buy, propane and fuel oil that we buy are at fixed price. And we have some that are running over budget, which means we're using more fuel. And I, I haven't suffered, we're on a, we're going to pull the limit here than I previously did. But then there's the other, which are the gasoline and diesel fuel, which we have, we have a contract, but it fixes the margin. It doesn't fix the unit price. So as the, as the unit price is fluctuating, we, we maintain the same margin, but we're exposed to the market.
So the question, it looks like we're at 99% for nuclear fuel and then 84% for diesel. Looks like they're both probably going to run over. Do you have any yes?
So to answer Steve's question, I spent some time with Jeff a couple of days ago, looking at the heating, oil and propane. And last year, our price was a buck 71. And this was just looking at the odd, because that was the one that was over budget the most, 128% to date. We had three tanker loads last year at $171, whereas this year it was at 240. So that's a pretty big significant, and let's see, we had two tankers as, as this report.
So almost tanker.
And when we built the budget sometime ago, that was, we built it at $2.25. And that was the price we were given from our consultants at that time. And we actually settled and signed the contract when it was at 240, so.
My question. I, I think based on, look at the budget I've done, I'm still cautious about the six-figure fund balance, low six-figure.
Yeah, my projection, conservative projection is 250,000 this year. We've gotten several state federal money for the EMS provider relief funds. We've gotten, and that goes straight, you know, covers up the revenue loss from the beginning of COVID till now, not just this fiscal year revenue loss. And covers also any COVID supplies that we've had to purchase. We've done vaccinations with our EMS guys that we paid them for their time. But then we build the state for like our time managing the dispatch schedule so they're ready. That goes straight to the bottom line. We have vacancy savings, so I'm pretty confident that we will have the 250 mark conservatively.
So on vacancy savings, I was looking at the planning, permitting, inspection line. So the budget's on 52,000, actual is 74,000 or 49%. Most of the budgets are, appear to be, you know, 60, 60 to 70%. And I know council's been really anxious about the number of vacancies. And is it, is it mostly personnel? There's, what percentage would you say are personnel savings from one field positions?
Didn't you make an estimate of that, about 95 to 100,000?
Yeah, exactly. It was 95.
At this point.
At this point. And that was just for the assessor position and I'm drawing a blank.
And I say that just from my 107, I'd much rather see this position spool than to have a fund balance at the end of the year.
The, the, the fund balances is based on the, in the back of planned basis, as for sure. We're pulling our hair out, right?
And another opportunity that saved us in staffing cost was, Stephanie got the summer matters grant last year that covered all of our lifeguards. So even though it's an expense, we have the revenue that, that covered that. And we were able to offer our community lore, lore tickets to, to cover the fuel or have it the full this year. Just looking at the vacancy savings here. So it was. So, it was 95,000, yep, for, through Q3 for the assessor savings and for the portion of the DPW mechanic.
And Frank, who's actually the vacancy service half, we don't, I guess, positions, but we have throughout the year, we have a lot of vacant positions. We just filled two firefighter positions that have been vacant two or three months.
Once of mid-December, the second since mid-February.
Yeah, okay.
Planning, permitting, and assessing, I know council talked about putting in temporary assistance or headhunter. Is that moved at all?
Well, I mean, we've considered it, but, but, I guess, I'm not aware of headhunters who would try to fill the assessing positions or more salary positions. The other, maybe to headhunter or temporary assistance. Well, we, we, we tried to get temporary assistance from the primary for the assessing. We have Russ, what's his last name? Russell, who has been helping us along, he's the assessor from the town, provides some assistance. We've asked if he would be able to, you know, provide a few hours a week if that, and he's just too old. We'll certainly, if anybody has any suggestions or names or contacts, we'll certainly pursue them, but just, it's terrible frustration, part of one of the various frustrations that's always Jan's.
How much education does it take to become an assessor?
To be an assessor, you're supposed to be certified to four levels through property evaluation and review. So, in small municipalities, they have blisters, which are usually retirees who volunteer and take a very tiny stipend and learn as they go. We are under the assessor module form of, of what we do. And to hire an assessor, that person would have to be certified as an assessor.
It's not something that we could hire for. You know, if you're interested in this, we'll give you the education as long as you sign the contract.
I know more about assessing now than to bring somebody in and expect them to start learning on the fly and taking classes. We really need somebody who's got some experience. An appraiser, if they, well, they make really good money right now selling houses. So, but if they ever wanted to switch gears and become an assessor, it's someone of that caliber.
Also, do you?
Is it thoughtful to perhaps add more money to the position to kind of?
Increase the salary offered by $10,000.
$10,000.
That's still not enough to.
Just putting it out. Yes, understand that, that municipalities, we're not the only municipalities.
Right.
Looking for an assessor.
Yep.
I think you said it right there. It feels like a dying dream.
I've heard that a couple of times in the last couple of times.
The workforce out there is, people are applying for jobs.
Well, there, there was a new report today in Vermont, there's $25,000, $2,000 jobs that have been lost since the start of COVID, and they're not filled. Assistance in Vermont.
So, are there any things, are there any other questions related to the budget overall, the stepping issue?
Budget overall, completely unrelated, yeah. I'm just curious, I don't remember whether it was our, our, the revenue recovery, the last revenue. Does that come in, I'm just curious, does, how did the program work? Were there cutoff dates where all of our, our, certain variables in the first? And that has since passed, so we got a one-time one.
So, we, we're on our third funding from this provider relief fund. And the first one, they just were in the business of shoving money out the door. So, we just got, got it based on some formula. Then I think it was round the rural, round three, we got 34,000. And that, because we're in a rural, considered zone, I can't remember the exact terminology.
We're not natural.
No, but the qualified census.
So.
Qualified census, correct?
Yeah, because we fall under that. And then we just received, maybe not even a week ago, 40,000. And that one, we have to prove that we can keep all the 40,000. I'm not quite there yet, but the timeframe was from the beginning of COVID. I think they went back to January and then through the R fiscal 22 law, the revenue loss. So, then, but then they did it by quarter, so you didn't have to have a loss in aggregate, just by quarter.
Okay.
Any other budget questions? I just had one, one request through the manager, is just to get an update at some point on where they have 2021 surplus. Yeah. How it's been assigned. It's just because I know we've moved a lot around and we're talking about the police cameras and I know we talked about a rainy day fund at some point.
I think we've only allocated, correct, but I think we've allocated somewhere around 8,000 of that, 500s.
So, we've, we broke it into five costs. That was the 85,000.
Yes.
Yep, of that, we've done the VOR roof repair, we've done the speed signs, and we've, as of time of this report, we had done half the tree guard, but now we've done it in full. So, we still don't have an IT system administrator, so that 33,000 for that year mark, you know, just to decide when, when that comes. The 50,000 went against the 23 budget subsidy. 200,000 is gonna stay in the general fund as a savings. And then 233,000 and change went to the capital budget. Of that number, 21.5 is committed to bio partners for the strategic plan. And 20,000 is earmarked for the speed signs. So, that capital budget remain in 182,000, almost five years of funding chance.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I see, I'm not doing a great job moving us along completely tonight, but certainly appreciate the time. Stay around, like, a great update, so seems like things are really on track.
Thank you.
So, it takes us to the annual adoption of local emergency management plan, which I think is pretty much an annual housekeeping item, right?
It is.
All right. Chief Brennan, welcome. How are you?
Fine, thank you. How are you all?
Great. But that is, Janet, I heard me wrong, I know you didn't use the.
I can't hear you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the mayor says it's an annual housekeeping item, but there's still a lot of hours that go into that house.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yep.
Lots.
Yeah, if you people wouldn't change places, that would make a lot of difference. Because when you do, we have to keep up with your residents and your phone numbers and all that stuff. But, you know, fortunately, Janet keeps a good handle on that. And as you said, this is an annual thing that's required under statute by the emergency management department of public safety, and we put this together. One of the things that's always disappointed me is that they always call it a plan. So, to me, when I look at the plan for my house, it tells me how I'm gonna build it. This really doesn't tell you how to do anything. It's a culmination, a summary of all the local information that we need in one place. And that's a little less now with smartphones, because the telephone number is generally speaking, we got them right at our fingertips rather than having to look them up and that. But I'm not saying that it's, it's a bad thing to have. It compels every town in the state of Vermont to do this on an annual basis, which is an important thing. The clearinghouse for it is the regional planning commissions. The state is tasked and would be the clearinghouse for that. And we have to have it in by May 1st, you know, every year. So, we're obviously approaching that. One of the things that used to be, hesitant to say, but I've been doing this for, this is my 36th plan that I've had a part of. And this used to be something when, as soon as the web was invented, yes, I wasn't around with it. I was around when the web was invented. These used to be posted up on the web, and you could go and look at any towns anytime you wanted. Well, then we had it, started having school tragedies. We started having terrorism incidents and things like that, where all of a sudden this became fodder for the terrorists to go online and look at what any community's vulnerabilities were. So, we're very careful with this now. We don't put those out there, because there are people that do bad things. They do bad things with the mayor's telephone number. They do bad things with the councilor's telephone numbers. They do bad things with the emergency manager's phone number. So, we try and keep those things a little less public than they used to be, just for those purposes. I'd gladly answer any questions about this, has several maps in here. It needs the mayor's signature, it needs my signature to go forward. And so, I guess, as I put in the action, no, any action that you would need to take tonight was to, okay, us to sign that on behalf of the city. And, is there any questions?
Questions? Very interesting, I, I, I think we're gonna go over motion, but I did want to just recall an interesting story Tom told me about the, some owners that the city owns and and just all the big goes into the emergency response, being able to act quickly and be able and certainly appreciate that, that all the, all the names that are on that list are ready to get the word when various city bases are crisis.
And fun fact for you, Mayor, you are the only one who can declare a state of emergency in the city.
Yeah, we can, we can get that out of the tour.
Yeah. First time Deputy Waltsworth came to my home and said, Mayor, I need to have you declare a state of emergency. I just looked at him and said, wait, what? But that is in fact the way it is, so always keep yourself humble here. Especially if it's raining.
Well, is there a motion to accept the male signatures, chief friend's signatures?
Oh.
Sorry. And I did make sure, I do know how much work goes into it. And so, I did take the opportunity, the opportunity to receive the plan to review each and every page. As I expected, very thorough and very well done, so thank you for that.
Not a problem. Janet, Janet described on this, and she does a great job at it, and I really appreciate it.
Count up today, take your seats.
And it just goes to, again, I'm not here to pat everybody on the back, goes to how well our staff runs together and we do them frequently. Heard that on other things tonight, and I just reiterate that in here.
We have a motion by Councilor Walsall, second by Councilor Stockwell. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Question carries, we'll get those signatures on there. That takes us to a resolution in support of youth engagement service and student art in Berry. So, you see that we have some new additions to city hall chambers, which are work from students in in Berry City, and so I drafted up a resolution acknowledging this, but also an acknowledgement of the amendment to the appointments policy. So, in its tradition, clerk creature. I, I.
Yes.
I'm happy to do a dramatic reading.
Okay. Honored to read it.
Berry City Resolution 2022-05. A resolution in support of youth engagement service and student art in Berry City. Whereas the governor's economic mitigation and recovery task force, you can sign those while I read it. And recovery task force three are on local support and community action in a paper on municipal engagement for diversity, equity and inclusion. Recommended that communities engage schools and give young people a seat at the table on boards, commissions and committees. And whereas a town meeting day survey issued in 2021 found that only one in five respondents thought Berry City offers good opportunities for young people starting out here to be happy and successful. A finding that concerned many people and served as a call to action. And whereas, in recognition of the unique perspectives and contributions Berry's youth can and do make in charting a better future for their city, the Berry City Council amended its municipal bodies and appointments policy on April 29, 2022 to allow and welcome youth applicants to specified commissions and committees. And whereas, under the leadership of Sue Higbee at Studio Place Arts and in partnership with Berry Art Educators Danielle Berg and
I'm reading.
Irene.
Movenonis.
There we go. Berry City Council is pleased to host us, 29 student self-portraits with artwork from students in grades eight to 12 on display in the city council chambers at Berry City Hall between April 21 and June 10, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that Berry City Council declares the month of May a month to celebrate and honor Berry City youth, their perspectives, their service and their contributions. And the council thanks Sue Higbee.
Danielle Berg.
And.
Irene Movenonis.
And the 29 student artists helping to remind council and staff at each and every meeting how our work must be focused on the long term, on our shared future and on the next generation of our city.
Council Walsall.
Was a lovely read. I just have one edit in the third. Yes, spelling people's names correctly is, is just a general one. No, the third, whereas April 29, 2022 has not happened. We mean March 29, 2022.
I believe you're right.
Have a special meeting on the 29th.
Facts, didn't matter.
Yes, yes.
So, there's a correction, April 29, 2022, I was spelling it Danielle in the last paragraph. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So.
Motion, second by Councilor Stockwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have a motion carries, thank you. And I hope everybody enjoys this hour. It's, it's nice to see them faces in the hall. That takes us to the ratification of council letter of support for Representative Welch on the 4-year mark request. Which Steve had put on the consent agenda. And I'd asked that you moved to the regular business to get a little bit of an overview, because if I understand right, council hasn't seen the 4-year mark request or the details of what's in it.
Well, I'm not sure I've seen them all. I think you saw one, first one that was, first one was Representative Sanders. It's not, it's not this one. You haven't, no, you haven't seen this. Here, this specific, specific year mark application. But the genesis of the letter of support, of course, is as we were pulling the, frankly, Cody took the lead in doing Yoma's job and developing a number of letters of support and just documentation. We discussed the correctness of having a letter of support from the city, which means the city council. Yeah, but we did have a council meeting for the deadline. So, I took the liberty of preparing a letter of support on behalf of the city council with the intent that the council would gratify it. Consider it fairly routine, a fairly standard letter of support. Council has, has written or authorized a number in over a year soon for that grant application. So, it is, that's the genesis of it. Considered a fairly straightforward, fairly formal action, but intended to strengthen the application.
Council. Yeah, so, since Cody is here and he came down from Berry Town, I think probably having him, you know, give a little overview. He gave one on the Berry beat last night, and, you know, certainly when, it hurt to have him do a little cheerleader section before we go to most, to approve it.
Alan, you got this.
I'm now envisioning Cody with paws.
Well, yeah, and maybe if you could just start us off telling us, you know, how, how are the needs identified in the buildings? Because I know this isn't our capital proofing plan, and I don't believe it's prioritized as a project in the municipal plan that I'm aware of. Well, it seemed to emerge as a, as a staff initiative.
So, staff initiative with also some initiative at the civic center community. I mean, the boiler replacements are on the capital plan for the civic center community. And maybe some of the others.
Season on a good opportunity.
So, so what the earmark applicant?
Yeah, so so with the earmark advocate, um the congressional directed spending um request process or also known as earmark process. Um we worked with city staff and under the direction of city manager to identify projects that could potentially be submitted for inclusion into the fiscal year twenty twenty-three federal um overall budget for federal government. And uh this is a relatively new process. It was reinstituted after being banned for a number of years. Um this is one project, Berry Auditorium project. Our submission to Sanders is over six million dollars. That would have brought uh electrical upgrades, air conditioning, or air filtration, overall HVAC upgrades, ADA accessibility upgrades. I believe uh one of the major improvements will be to actually create a second ramp to go into the building itself. Which um provided some hesitation at state level to use it odd as a mass vaccination, mass testing site back earlier. One of my first site selection duties when I first came on the job here at B E D C was actually to look for an alternate uh location. And there was only one in the Berry area that checked enough boxes, but staying ahead of the going with the odd step. So these are um and there's also gonna be audio visual and telecommunications equipment upgrades, like some of the wires and stuff, so CVTV and other media partners could do their jobs a little better in there. So overall, it's just um for a building of that size being built in the late nineteen thirties, um and for what it actually does need, uh this earmark is really just a whole question. It's a drop in the bucket. Um you could probably cancel those on, you know, construction and the manager, you know, construction money. Anyone was running YouTube and probably for YouTube or guess for how much money could be sunk in that building.
Well, if you look at every
I mean
What are the amounts?
Um for every single need in the building, um probably
I mean, we don't have any details.
Yeah, yeah. So for the uh for the two requests, um they were uh six point two seven five million and four point uh five seven five million. So we had to work with a couple contractors and in the area, let's say, a contractor that the city has engaged in in the past. Uh so that will, you know, those projects are uh so those improvements will be will do what is needed at minimum to be able to host uh mass vaccination events, clinics, testing, um basketball tournaments in a in a safe environment. I think many of us who read the VT digger last month, I would see that there is an outbreak that may have been linked to the auditorium uh after a small game. Uh so this is um following through on a lot of the conversations that have been held with civic center, the civic center committee meetings over the past few years.
Jeff, probably longer than that. Um I I actually have uh assessment matrices that I've done for all the buildings in the city, for city hall, public safety, and the three buildings on the hill. And for about the last ten years, that's been a main topic of discussion with the civic center committee. Where are your rankings? You know, and at meetings, we may adjust those rankings and bend on, you know, we had some money. We did some restrooms over and on my halls. That dropped off the list. Something else moved up. Uh the auditorium HBAC has always been like one of, if not the top issue of the buildings on the hill. Uh a lot of you have been there. We did revotes in May and June, and you're in the auditorium. There's no air movement at all. Since COVID, that's been a big contention with the health department, uh basketball tournaments. There's no, there's no air movement. You know, you have heat and weather, but there's no air movement. Uh so that alone, the HBAC alone, I had someone from New England Air walk through with me last week. And they came back with an estimate of one point seven million to replace the boilers for air conditioning. Uh Merd thirteen filtration system. So it's no small project. Enlarging the locker rooms for the Vermont Principals Association. We only have one each women's and men's ADA restrooms. One, one entrance exit with a ramp for ADA. Need to have two for a building that size. So there's just this multitude of projects that are sitting there waiting for a chance to get some funding. I the only other way we'd ever be able to do all this would maybe go out with a bond vote and I, you know, I've seen bond votes here for a million and two million that just barely get by. But to ask for, you know, four million in a bond vote, it's a stretch. Um this was so this was an opportunity. Um I know some of the civic center committee members thought I didn't bring it to them early enough. That was the earliest meeting we had since I was made aware of this. Um and to me, it's kind of a no-brainer. Um we have these needs and here's a source.
And we had a, you know, long they held identified needs for the for the facility that we're able to quickly put together and get some partners on board and we're able to get broad support from the community from what's really a well-funded project here. And I'll 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 defer to Deputy Chief Walsworth and Chief Brent on this, but from the emergency management side. Uh these upgrades are something that the state of Vermont has been asking for and also the BPA for you on on that part. So with that, um supporting the project, we have a long, long list of supporters. We have over twenty-two local businesses, various department health officials, including Commissioner Mark Levine, who many remember um stood next to the governor during hundreds of COVID press conferences.
Sorry, quick live on the question, BPA?
Vermont Principals Association.
That's what I thought.
The basketball.
Oh, okay, okay. No, that's I've worked with them.
My apologies.
No, I was I was like, that's why I thought it was a principal association, not the wire they were.
All right.
Yeah, I get I get. I think we I think the council understands that there's a lot of
Yes, but but
On the numbers, my question of numbers, um it this my my reading, Ron. On the question of numbers, this is a million dollar investment into a um into a building. Then uh and it sounds like there could be increased operational costs. And I come wondering, how are these realistically, like how would how's the budget realistic, like cal calibrated if we get this one? What does it mean in terms of local match or the city's budget? I think there are no local match. I guess I just don't know the details. So
Cody grew up wrong, but I understand there's no there's no local match to pay the earmark funds if we get if we get them.
So and that and that's one of the reasons that we're seeking uh the opportunities, um this funding, these funding opportunities. Couple of other projects that we submitted for, one is the digest or cover of the wastewater treatment plant. Uh that's something that's in influence makes the north ends get a little bit of smell. So if we're able to get that funded, that would help improve the quality of life of residents in the north end, increase energy costs, and improve overall efficiency for the system. Now, we have we had a water main break a couple of days ago. Uh we in in consultation in conjunction with the public works department and the city manager and the frame group, we ended up uh putting in for over two million dollars for the root bridge and water main project. That's the water system that runs from the orange reservoir, literally under the East Berry Dam and along Route three oh two, the water is clean drinking water to the city of Berry and the town of Berry, its residents, inhabitants. Um so
Yeah, Cody, I apologize for being curt. Um I just I worry a lot about the city's money and I worry a lot about capital investments, knowing the the huge backlog that are that's out there. And so that's I I think there's support for this earmark. Um I'll just say I I wish we could have gotten a little bit more details and I wish I could see what what it means uh going forward for the city. Um but it sounds like it's it's a really well-made investment. I'm also a little worried based on the Corey Street earmark, which I think, you know, could potentially be uh a bad deal for the city that benefits Berry Town at the cost of our city. And it's and it's just one thing. Uh that's why I'm very cautious about this. But of Council Stockwell.
So Jeff, from your point of view, this represents the highest priority with all to the best investment we could make.
Because because of the type of usage that it gets. We're in an emergency med, emergency hospital. If is there another pandemic, uh we have that, we're mass mass med, med surge. We are Red Cross shelter. Um we're a vaccination site. We're a testing site. People on this council and previous councils have been asking me about, why isn't the building used in the summer? Well, just go up there, come up there in June and July and you'll find out why. Um you know, that building for its age, I had a CYO basketball turn their Catholic youth organization. Um a couple of weekends ago, people from all over New York were there. And people came in and they were amazed at the condition of that building for its age. I mean it it's a jewel. And to keep our current renters and to get new renters through the summer months, we gotta we gotta make an investment in it. Or in a land of like Memorial Auditorium and Bridge.
And that's one of the reasons that the Vermont Principals Association uh kind of supporting this project. These are things that they've been asking. And we would once a once an entity like that, once an event like that leaves a community, it generally doesn't come right back. It goes to Chitting County, wherever. And I believe Jeff, uh anybody in here can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's one of the biggest revenue sources for the auditorium.
That's our that's our biggest renter, the basketball terraces.
But 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 as far as I'm concerned, uh the whole neither of those two earmark was the most significant and the most critically important piece of that is the replacement of the boilers in the auditorium. Uh we we managed to steal uh the feet from the jaws of victory four years ago with the city hall boilers. When we got to both of them being down in the month of December. Um we recovered, we got through that. We proactively replaced the boiler in Alumni Hall and frankly upgraded all um heating system a couple of years ago, very cost effectively. So we smashed victory from the jaws of defeat there. And hopefully we can do the same thing with the uh because those how old are those boilers?
One of them died six weeks ago.
Right.
It cracked, lost all the water. It's done. So those boilers are would have moved right up to the top of the list.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's very hopeful. We'll get those replaced before the same thing happens.
Council Walsworth?
Um good. I just wanted to pass the microphone to either Chief Brent or Deputy Chief Walworth, to see if there was any other, anything else you wanted to Cody alluded to some messages from the state regarding the building that you might have, and I didn't know if that's comforting what Jeff said or
Yeah, I mean, I Joe's been on your line. So let him join in a little and I can fill in the blanks. Um but Joe worked very hard with Jeff and Cody to get this stuff done and get those letters of recommendations we got um going and so forth. And it took a lot of the work to do it. So go ahead, Joe.
Uh thank you, chief. So uh can everybody hear me?
Yep.
So the auditorium for many years now, uh since I've been here, um has been a uh uh source for the state to partner with as uh Council of Ozon knows. Um it's been the main uh source for people to have uh the shelter through the Red Cross and which we use during the floods. Um through that, it identified that the Central Vermont Hospital didn't have a med surge overflow capacity. And uh the downstairs currently has a capacity of fifty beds for uh subacute uh folks to be able to go in and overflow capacity in partnership with the state and uh Central Vermont Hospital. Uh as we're going through, ten years ago, we were preparing for uh uh the bird flu. Uh and we we uh developed another partnership with the state as far as a point of distribution for um inoculations. So as uh the current pandemic was unfolding, um we really, there was no other suitable location in Central Vermont to stand up uh mass inoculations. So the the Berry Auditorium, we had a plan in place. We had an agreement in place. We were able to iron out uh some funding to offset the uh usage of that facility. But it was really uh with some improvements that the state stepped up with the handicap ramp and uh and some air filter, you know, air movement. Were able to facilitate central Vermonters uh really uh pushing through probably thirteen counties worth of people through there for the initial inoculation inoculations and uh testing. Um that was quite the feat trying to facilitate that. Um but we were able to do that efficiently through there. Um as as uh inoculations continued, um they they looked at other all sources closer to the hospital and then they transitioned to the mall where they didn't have as big of an influx. But there was really no other suitable place. The uh some of the things that the uh the health department uh had identified were the the uh HBAC heating and cooling, especially in the summer or the, you know, May months when we have flooding to uh house people in the Red Cross shelter. And working with Mark Crisp and stuff like that, we had a lot of issues with trying to figure out how we were going to do that effectively. That was one thing that we had is that we had some folks that were in there during the May floods that yeah, it was pretty hot and and pretty stuffy and they were on oxygen and it didn't work well. So a lot of these stuff that uh we worked with Jeff and Cody and Billy and and the manager, we we really came up to find that the the auditorium had an opportunity to to really uh tap into some funding sources that could really uh you know, put the heart and lungs back into that building and allow uh future development and improvements. But if you don't have those, you know, and you know, infrastructure in place, you can't, you can't make those other, you know, other efficiencies. So um the group decided that that was the way to go. We were able to work with some local contractors and contractors with the city. Uh in conjunction, we're able to solicit the uh support from those entities that said, hey, we need to have this stuff on the radar. So they really stepped forward and 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 put their name on the line to say, you know, we support the city in this. Um as Jeff said, I don't think this is, this isn't the silver bullet. But this will give us a huge leg up on the the infrastructure, the 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 core of the building. So that now, once we get that through, we can really develop that facility to its full potential, knowing that the heart and lungs are fully functioning.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Um and just thank you to the staff and to Cody for being such cheerleaders at the federal level for, you know, we have for the next nine months, we have three very influential members of Congress. So trying to squeeze every dollar out of that that we can over the next nine months, I think. Thank you all.
Thank you. Council of Ozon? Thank you. Um are there any other earmark opportunities or any other project you'll be applying for? Because I know these have happened really quickly. I mean, sometimes I really appreciate the occasion. But other times I have to realize how unimportant I am in scope of things. And and so thank you for taking the initiative. And uh so, yeah, I didn't know much about this request and I had called Cody and say, okay, what was this all about? Educate me a little bit. Um but thank you for taking the initiative. Thank you to Cody and to Jeff and to Bill and and to Steve and Janet and everyone who participated because, you know, as we've all talked about, these opportunity, you know, these doors at the level, they're opening and closing just so quickly. And I'm just grateful that at a time when when we certainly don't have an abundance of staff, we have people like South Cody willing to to step up and and take a little initiative. So uh you know, having heard about the HVAC issues when we lost the farm show. You know, that was why, because the building wasn't comfortable, even though we, you know, so many affiliated to the farm show really appreciated the history of that building and really wanted to keep it there. But at the end of the day, it simply wasn't comfortable building, uh you know, to to be in. Uh you know, thank you to the Vermont Principals Association. We're not for the fact that that building is just iconic. You know, and uh you know, one of the top places to play high school basketball in the United States, they might have moved on to. So, you know, I wish you all the luck. Thank you very much. Uh and Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make the motion to gratify the council letter of support.
Sorry, there's a motion, second, Council of Ozon. Uh any further discussion?
If anybody has any friends in Congress or the Senate, please put in a good word for Berry.
If anyone happens to be hosting a fundraiser for a certain congressman in August, I'll be sure to
Thank you for that. And a good check from there you go. And also, uh just thinking about the installation, a whole bunch of heat pumps or mechanical equipment. We just talked about this building tonight and trying to really think about uh the aesthetic and the the cultural significance of that building was designed in a way, as I understand, one of the first female architects that is still in Vermont. Um it is very, very significant and has had modifications that aren't always as reverential uh to uh to its architecture, architectural heritage as it could be. Uh so what what are the, you know, if this earmark comes through, what would be the next steps to make sure that um that the 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 design and that it's phased? What's the basic?
So we'll we'll work with, you know, engineering
So we'll, we'll work with, you know, an engineering firm, architectural firm. We've got the Norwich Engineering and Architectural Schools that are going to be doing some work for their class. Whatever they do, granted, it, it's not stampable, but it'll be of the quality that we can bring it to an actual firm and have them stamped and move forward from there. We'll do everything we can to make sure, you know, the structure itself remains the iconic building that it is. It'll be, you know, rooftop, there's vents up there now, there's vent fans. It don't work very well, but the A C will be rooftop. We'll keep everything, you know, as clean as we can.
Literally the day after we get the announcement of the award, we'll start the immediate preparation of an architectural engineering. We'll scope the project and then solicit and edit the holes. We'll go through the same kind of consultant selection process that we've done a number of times. But we, time is of the essence because. Stay fantastic, stay by the twenty three. So. We'll have to move out smiling. I mean, I. Even say, gosh, it would be too early to start now. That process, it's, it's a gamble, it's a risk, but this is that much further into the game if it's. And the council's interested in speculation.
And Jeff's a capital list that you have all the needs, is that going to roll into the capital improvement?
Yes.
process? And again, I apologize for being short.
Well, it's getting weak.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So we have a motion in a second. Hearing and seeing if there's a discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those posts, yes, have a motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That takes us to upcoming business. So a quick heads up, we have a busy month of May ahead of us. We are going to be looking at manager search. And as you know, our next meeting is, we're going to have a six o'clock executive session, we're going to get a handoff from the manager search committee. We, I expect that that could run around an hour and a half. And, and I've been asking all the councillors to come prepare, having read that report and thinking about ranking and selecting some finalists for the interview process. So if you have any questions about the schedule, definitely let me know and we can go through all that. As you know, we talked briefly about getting a legal opinion on the local cannabis control board. That's been postponed because it sounds like there's still some moving pieces and we don't necessarily need it right now, maybe B L C T. We'll be coming back with, with some guidance in cannabis control. Is that your understanding, Councilor Lozón?
Yes, sir.
They're doing a webinar as well in the next week or two.
Okay.
Some of that stuff.
That may be helpful for us to, to check out. I, I think we're potentially getting a summary of the legal expenses on the Brian John lawsuit against the city. We'll be looking at a flag request and potentially talking about, Stephen and I have a little bit more coordination on this. But the housing are the planner job description. And seeing if we can get that job notice rolling and making sure everybody's on the same page about what that role might look like. With, with potential housing projects and the perp funding that's been assigned by council. Other than that, are there any other upcoming business items that anybody wants to, that it's up about?
We'll have a, we'll have a report from Stephanie Clark on the fifth, the fifth. Development opportunities was going to be, but we will probably have to slide that because they're. Be the same decisions. So. That text.
That includes the refinement of the parking study that we saw earlier.
Yeah.
Potential executive session on real estate. The district, and I know that'll be the first Tiff conversation for some of the new councillors to get caught up. So that'll take some briefing time as well. So that takes us to round table. Council, Darren, you want to start us off?
I'm just excited for Greenup Day. I know that we've made some plans at Green Acres. We're going to have Chief Brent come up with a fire truck. And I know that Chief Brad has agreed to come up with his wife and pick some trash with us up in Green Acres. So it's exciting, picking some of those fifty three bags, maybe fifty five, you know.
Council.
So after or before you go on the green out, you can go to blow up for blow up from ten AM till one PM ish. They might get done a little bit early depending on how hot it is and inside those costumes, it can get pretty, pretty bad. I want to say thank you to city hall staff. I sent an email off to, I think it was Bill. About a pop hole on Hill Street and within twenty four hours it was fixed. So shout out to him and Carol. I really appreciate the work that you're doing to try to make our legislators. Our Gov Ops to do what they should do. And I really appreciate that. And. I, I, it's amazing how we are so lucky as a community to have you as a clerk and I really appreciate it. And. I guess that's it.
Thank you, counsel.
Counselor Lozón.
Definitely echoing everything Michael just said about Carol. We love you. It's not, not.
Selective.
Yeah, right. So moved. Not, not to bring, not to bring the mood down at all, but there have been a couple instances of, of violence towards members of the LGBTQ. Community in, in Vermont over the past couple of months. And it's getting scary for a lot of people. So hold your friends and your families close and checking with the folks you love. There's a lot of folks are really sure.
Counselor Stockwell.
Oh, thanks.
Counselor Lozón, I'm really looking forward to Greenup Day. I'm disappointed that the former mayor didn't notice because last weekend I went and cleaned up an area that he's always complained to you about. And he didn't mention it. And I want to congratulate myself on not making a handful of electric trucks. He sat there with his dogs.
Maybe we can get some bags tonight.
Michael said, folks have noticed, but D P W was actually been out there washing down the sidewalks on.
It's all that looks great. Thank you for that.
Well, that's good. These steps with the fire. They use the fire, use the back. Or.
Looking good. A lot of grit from the winter built, built up. And as you know, councillor Sean Bell was away this evening, but I would just like to add that, you know, spring's the time of renewal. And hope and change and all, although, you know, we have a lot faced with uncertainty with the economy and COVID. I think, I think we can't help but be hopeful and thankful for moments. For me, it was like going to the egg hunt with councillor Jerry and watching what a great job Stephanie put on with that team. Seeing those kids just square around and they're like vacuum cleaners getting those eggs in five minutes' time. And that evening, I attended my first sater for Passover, which is a special, special event for me. Saw the grand opening, the Highland Avenue had at that house and that was blessed by the local minister. And, and had meet and greets with Capstone's executive director, Sue Minter, Carol, Chairman Lady University Act and Committee Genie at the Justice Center. And congressional candidate and our senate president, Proton Back of Bell, visiting various. And with the war raging in Ukraine, and we sit here as free people with comparatively few problems. I'll leave this with this quote from the Chilean poet Pablo Neruda. You can cut all the flowers, but you cannot keep spring from coming. And that's it. I'll pass.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do you need the, the executive session?
Unless there's any questions on the, that memo. Yeah. All right. There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, eyes have it.